Morning, we'll call the meeting to order. First order on the agenda is approval of our agenda for the day.
Able to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Jim, you're the only citizen out there, you want to be heard before you're going to be heard, or no? Okay. Approved minutes of the January 6th and 13th, 2015 meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Approved payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
Motion and second to pay the bills and vouchers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. And first item on our agenda is presentation, an update regarding Greater Fargo-Moore Economic Development Corporation's strategic plan. Come on up, Jim. Jim Garten, President of the Greater Fargo-Moore EDC. Good morning.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning, Jenny. Good time, good morning. Nice to meet you.
Likewise.
Well, thank you. I want, I know that John and I were here not too, not too long ago, just giving everybody a fourth order update. But at the December 2014 GFM DC Board Meeting, we adopted our new strategic plan that will commence early in 2015. It's a project that we worked on pretty much all the way through 2014 and presented it to the Board for the Board's approval, which they did approve at our December meeting. And as we finished that, we thought that it was very important early in January to get to both county commissions and update them on the strategic plan as our two largest, one of our two largest investors. We want to make sure that what we've done and where, the direction we're heading, we do have two of your commissioners on our Board that were present on the 14th and reviewed it, but wanted to make sure that it was presented to everybody. We really came up with the proposal that we had sent, not the proposal, the plan that we had sent that we're going to be planning our plan of work off of, came up with five priorities. The number one is not surprising to anyone, to facilitate the traction of talent to the region and to maintain talent, and a lot of different ways of doing that, to encourage the expansion, increase the awareness of technical training and higher education, STEM education, and associated career opportunities. We feel very strongly that we need programmatic things, not just four-year education, that we need two-year, we need even, you know, just certificate programs and then two-year programs, as well as four-year programs, that are all tied together. And with now M-State and NDSCS being tied into the tri-county or tri-college program, we think that's a great step forward, especially in the certificate and the two-year. So, all of those credits as they move up would be able to be applied even into a four-year school as they finish all the accreditation process, which we think is really important. So, we have that stair-step approach from an education standpoint. The third is, which was kind of surprising as we went through it, but they felt strongly that we needed to be advanced advocacy agendas and communicate the economic impact not only to community stakeholders, but that we need to go out and monitor and advocate key public policy issues. In the past, we have relatively stayed neutral on a lot of different things, but they felt very strongly that, you know, we, especially in the areas of education and workforce development and things like that, that they've outlined, and entrepreneurial development, that, you know, we take a broader voice within the market. We still aren't going to politically advocate because that's not in our 501(c)(3) status capabilities, but at least to be able to speak out on these issues and to be more aggressive, if you will. The leveraging the existing and emerging regional industry base and tying it into not only with NDSU, but as we can, even with M-State and with Concordia, because they do have different programs that we're working on that would have a major impact on potential partnerships with businesses and higher education in all three schools, as well as the two-year schools as well. And then the last is to really focus and work on continuing our growth in the entrepreneurial area within our marketplace, which we think has made great strides in the last three years, and we really are starting to see some of the benefits. So, we're really, again, this whole plan goes back to this focusing on what we call that economic gardening concept. We have expanded in this program, a more aggressive attraction program for Cass and Clay Counties, but it's been very specific to things like distribution centers, to things like data centers, technical corporations, manufacturing or software that's in high, high-tech manufacturing. Those will be the areas that we're going to have a focus on from a sheer attraction standpoint in 2015 and moving forward. And all of this is a living document that will be adapted and manipulated, kind of changed as the market gives us direction on a yearly basis, but this gives us our foundation for the next five years. The one that this replaced, if you remember, had a focus on vaccinology and some of the other research areas, that really never came to fruition in the marketplace. And so, it really was time that we kind of got away from that and got back to the reality of who we are and what we're doing and really focusing on what we do well. And we do a lot of things well in Cass and Clay Counties, and so, we need to build off that and really focus on it and focus on how do we attract the people we need to have sustainable growth within our businesses. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have, but that's just a very quick synopsis. I do want to mention one other thing, that in the past, the EDC's defining, you know, who we are, kind of focused around primary sector and that there was a definition of what primary sector. The state of North Dakota has broadened that definition as Minnesota has, and we are going to be doing that and kind of restating our mission a little bit, that hasn't been finalized yet, but we want to be able to offer services and programatics to large distribution centers, data centers, and some of these others that typically would not fall under that manufacturing criteria, but they are high-tech and they do serve the community. For example, we're working on a distribution center right now, it's almost 500,000 square feet. It'll be a $20 million, you know, facility and capital, which will be great tax base, but it won't require 200 employees. And so, we get the tax base and we, you know, we don't have a large need from a workforce standpoint. Same with data centers, that can be 60, 70, 80 million dollar investments, so it's, again, it's great for the tax base. And they have high-tech employees, but they don't traditionally have large numbers of people that they would be competing with existing businesses for. So, we think we're on the right track, we're very positive about this new strategic plan. We would like for you to, as we have, as our Board has, adopt it, we would like to have the Cass County Commission adopt this as our strategic plan, because as I say, we're working for you and our mission. And so, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just like to make a comment, Jim, the other, going to priority number two.
Yeah.
The other day in the newspaper, there was this article on students that are basically employed within minutes after they graduate. And I think we're going to see more of that too locally, in-state and other facilities that put out these people with these technological degrees.
Yeah. We think the certification of the two-year programs are really critical, and we really have supported Peggy Kenny, Kennedy and her growth and as not only here, but also down in Detroit Lakes, I mean, because it just helps the region. And of course, NDSCS's communication and discussions about expanding their Fargo campus, because again, we think that that traditional base, if we can serve that better and have more opportunities for people. But we also have to start that process at the high school level. We've even been told at the elementary school level to start transitioning people's mindsets, that not everybody has to have that four-year education, that there are great opportunities. I enjoyed reading in the Wall Street Journal the other day that they interviewed this young guy who was a specialty materials welder in Texas. Both his, excuse me, both his parents were PhD professors, and he made more than both of them, in the sense that on an annual basis, you know, he was making about $135,000 a year. So, there are great opportunities for people in the marketplace, and we need people, and we need highly trained and educated people from a technology standpoint.
Kevin.
Yeah, Jim, I think that's, that's really good. And I, you know, I was listening to one of our recent past Presidents of one of our local universities, and there was a frustration level there of too many students were trying to go into the higher education area when they weren't ready. And so, you were starting to, so what would you see, is they would, they would enroll into a four-year college and end up not making it through. And that also added on to the national deal with the student loans, because along with the, so all these things, it just was kind of a buildup of some degree of failure.
Yeah.
But, this idea of promoting for a significant portion of our young population, that there's not a thing wrong with going to a two-year institution, because quite frankly, there are, there are some programs that come out of there where the earning abilities are tremendous, you know, especially in, in the North Dakota area and in the areas of, you know, you brought up welding is a major one, and there's a lot of opportunities there. And that isn't to say that somebody might not expand on that and then move on to, to a higher degree of education down the road, but if we're going to establish the workforce that we need, we're going to have to have both of those.
And that's why we had three manufacturing days last year. You know, there's only one true manufacturing day, it's in October, but we did three, where we take high school students from all over the region, both sides of the river, and take them into manufacturing plants on tours. And we also do that with counselors. We wish we could do it with parents, because what the kids are saying, what the counselors are saying is, this isn't what I had anticipated. The technology that's in these facilities, what's happening within these facilities, they're not dark, kind of dingy, kind of places anymore.
Jenny.
So, when you say they're going into these places with the schools, are you working with the classes and the instructors or the school boards, how are?
Typically, we're working with the school systems. We created, along with United Way, a program called Education That Works, and it includes right now the three superintendents and their staffs from Fargo, West Fargo, and Moorhead. And now, we're including several of the other districts, and we hope to build that as it goes. But what that was, is it gave us all the opportunities for, for them to communicate and partner and do programmatic things together, so it reduces all their costs, especially in teacher education, continuing education, and especially summer programs for kids. So, traditionally in those, we work directly with the superintendent's offices and then we coordinate it. But we do it, we pay for the buses, we organize it, we, you know, lay it out and take the people, and then traditionally either M-State or NDSCS will supply a lunch that day at one of their facilities, so they can also not only see the manufacturers, but also what the training could be like in those, those schools.
And is there, are you full up on those three days? Could you add more?
We started off with about 80, and the last one we did in October had 190 students.
Great.
And, you know, we're hoping that as we go through, that we can continue to build on that, that, and we've had, the manufacturers have been great, we have people wanting to do it the next time, but we don't want the students to have to see the same thing. So, we're really trying to diversify that. And the manufacturers have been great. In the tech companies, we've added a couple of tech companies that don't need four-year education either.
Well, I think that's a great thing to do, because a lot of times, students, young students don't understand the careers that there are out there. So, the, the thought is sometimes is, I need to go to college, like Kevin said, and get a four-year degree, but there are amazing opportunities for two-year degrees, and this is a great way to open the door to those.
Yeah.
Kevin.
Jim, the, the areas here, and I know you're expanding, and we always look for a lot of good-paying producing companies to come into our area, and a lot of them is really technology-driven.
Yeah.
And how are we, and I might be way late in asking this question, but how are we in the broadband area here for, for the ability to have major companies? It seems to me the last time I heard, we had good broadband capabilities going from here east, and we had an issue going to the west. Do we have problems with that right now, or?
Right, I think it's gotten a lot better. I think that on the Minnesota side, it's probably stronger than it is on the North Dakota side, and they are, you know, I think realizing that, you know, you had a spine or backbone that came in from Detroit Lakes, was probably 18 months ago, that, you know, brought very strong broadband to the marketplace. The North Dakota side is building that in the cities, I think they're strong enough. It all depends on pulling it the last mile to where buildings are, is always an expensive cost to any, on either side. But I would say right now, Minnesota's ahead of North Dakota and really probably much better. That was one of the things that we looked at, because we have felt that the Minnesota side has great opportunity for data centers because of the flood issues. And, but we checked into the broadband capabilities, and we do have that. They like redundancy, so they like to see providing, coming into their facilities, two, maybe even three suppliers, so they have redundant systems, because they can't afford to go down.
But you, I've heard of broadband in the sense that you talked or heard about it four years ago, and broadband, four years ago, and broadband today.
It's different.
There, there are like night and day difference in terms of the amount of data and how fast, how quickly things can, can move, and, and I think it's going to be equally important that we stay on top of that as well.
Okay, anything else for Jim? Jim, thanks for coming, and thanks for your leadership at the EDC. I think under Jim's leadership, I think Clay County has truly become a partner in what's going on in economic development in our region, so thanks for that.
Did you want us to pass a?
Well, we'd like for you to adopt this, if you can, would like to.
Yeah, to adopt the EDC strategic plan.
Yeah, I would, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt the economic development plan for 2015 to 2020.
Mr. Chair, on the second motion.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
Good work.
See you on Friday.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you're presenting, aren't you?
Right, workforce, of all things.
All right.
Thank you.
Your homework.
Okay, next item on the agenda is adoption of waste designation plan and departmental update. Kirk Rosenberger, good morning Kirk.
Good morning, Kirk. I did not forget my razor, this is for a charity that I'm going to hit your heads up for here a little later on, so.
You expect me to grow a beard, forget it.
Oh, yeah, it was a long weekend, but that's a whole other story. I had a wisdom tooth pulled on Thursday, and I had a little dry socket going on, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a good, it's not a good time, let me tell you. Anyway, back to business, as they say, enough about me. The first item up for your consideration today is a approval of the designation plan. We've talked about designation process quite a bit. Jenny, just for your information, essentially what the designation process is about, is it, it's going to require all the waste haulers to take their waste to either the transfer station or the landfill. The.
All Clay County waste.
All Clay County waste. And essentially, I think that people think that they already have that through the licensing, but this is actually the way to actually do it. So, we're in a process with Prairie Lakes, Clay County's over Prairie Lakes, if I were to pass the designation plan, we will be the third. Becca County is going to be acting on this item again today, as well as going to be about Todd probably next week, I think is when they're going to address it. So, with that, if you have any questions at all, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any, have any, have any questions they'd like to ask Kirk?
Unless it's coming out of your designated budget already, correct?
Yes, there's no, you know, as far as the, the budget, the only thing that we're going to have to pay for right now is of course, inventory cost, and it is included in the budget.
Correct.
So, this, Kirk, this, this process to finally have the designation plan implemented, we have to go through a, a process.
Yes, as Chairman, Commissioner, and I probably should have talked about that a little bit. This, this process, it's, it'll take about a year for the process to actually be completed. This is the first step, the approval of the designation plan. Designation plan is essentially kind of an overview of our solid waste plan and, you know, what we're doing in Prairie Lakes. The plan will go to the MPCA, the regulatory agency of the state, to, to review it, and they will take a look at it. I may be back, because they like to change stuff, so I may be back and we may have to revise it. But during that, after the PCA approves it, what will happen is, is that there'll be a public hearing, so we'll have a public hearing to talk about anybody that is interested in the designation process, will come in and give some testimony. It's been my experience, it's mostly only been waste haulers that have participated, so that's who I would anticipate would be at this public hearing. And then at the same time, we also will negotiate, to try and negotiate a contract with the waste haulers as well. That's our preference, if we can get the waste haulers to sign a contract to, to be involved, that's what we would much prefer. So, that's kind of, kind of the process. After all that is completed, then designation ordinance will be prepared, and as part of the designation ordinance, that will require the waste to be deposited, Clay County waste to be deposited at the landfill or transfer station.
And maybe if I could follow up, Mr. Chairman, on this a little bit too. You know, part of this, being on the solid waste committee for quite a while, part of the reason that we're doing this is having to protect the investment that we're making into solid waste, whether it be the expansion of our landfill, or whether it'll be if and when we complete this new transfer station, that, that we're going to need to do, do something with at some point in time with, in cooperation with the city board. But with that, the whole idea behind that, you have to have, to make it work and feasible, you have to produce and go through a significant number, a proper number of solid waste. So, if you're having private haulers taking that solid waste to someplace else, there's a loss in revenue to Clay County that can impact and actually hurt the ability to have the facilities that we've invested in generate the revenue to pay for its improvement.
That's exactly right. I mean, one of the things that, this, this particular process has been litigated extensively, and there's been numerous cases at the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court of the United States has indicated that in order to ensure that proper waste management is implemented, and it's higher on the hierarchy, that this is, this is the most prudent way to try and proceed with the process.
One of the, one of the things to remember too, is that this doesn't, this doesn't necessarily tie our hands as a county from, from doing other things down the road. For example, if, if years from now, we were to go together and incorporate something with our neighbors across the river, whether it be Cass or the city of Fargo, we would still have the ability through this plan, this designation plan, to send potential product over there. This won't interfere with, with the ability to those types of things. So, we've, we've kind of left our, our options open on this as well, but it's more of, it's more about whoever is going to all of our residential properties in the county and picking up that garbage, that they bring it to us. That's what this is really, and the same with commercial.
Right.
Is that going to be more of a cost to some of these commercial guys?
It's, it's possible, it could be more of a cost, yes. One other thing, it's really interesting, I mean, and I'll talk about this a little bit later on, but I've been talking to the city of Fargo a lot more than what has happened between Clay County and the city in the past, and they're in the process right now of screening loads as they come in, because they don't want any waste from Clay County to go in there either. It's, they're, they're getting significant amount of material from Clay County.
Yeah, there's, there's more coming down too, that, that's going to be in this whole solid waste area, this, this single sort type of deal that we're looking at, that's, that's kind of outside of this, but there's going to be, you know, Frank, you mentioned, is it going to be more expensive for some, but there's also going to be a lot of other opportunities and improvements and easiness of the way solid waste is handled. There's not going to have to be splitting all sorts of these things for recycling anymore. It's going to be a single sort situation where, where we're going to gather it all and it's going to get, you know, but that's, that's a separate issue than this, but it's all kind of tied together.
Right. Jenny.
So, this may have been covered already, but if we're in the future going to require that all this trash goes to the transfer station at Clay County, what will that do to the estimated life of our landfill, as, as that's been a big number that I've heard tossed around here and there, has that been factored in?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I, it has been factored in, and essentially, the, the life of the landfill is approximately 50 years. As I said, you know, I think I've come out on my one-year anniversary now, I can't believe it, but as I said during my interview, I mean, I think that landfill should be considered a resource, because it is a resource, and we ought to do whatever we can to try and extend the use of that landfill. And one of the things obviously that we're going to be doing is taking about 9,400 tons over to Prairie Lakes on an annual basis. The other thing that we're, we're looking at right now is this single sort recycling, so we can get more people recycle. So, a long way to answer your question is, yes, it has been considered as part of the, the volume going into the landfill and how much capacity it will have.
Yeah, I, I would say that if all of the plans fall into place of what we'd like to do, that even with this designation plan, we would probably see an improvement to the length of our landfill, to the life of our landfill. The amount of money, or the amount of solid waste that would go to perm for incineration, we play, we get that replaced with, with ash and stuff like that, that we use for daily cover. And then, the fact of the matter is, is we're going to, hopefully at some point in time, we are going to have this MRF, as it's known, we would like to have this MRF in place, and that separates garbage and it does allow us to recycle product, and I'm not going to say that we're going to break the doors down with revenue coming in, but we will start seeing some revenue generated by, at the perm facility right now, they, they send out tons and tons of aluminum and all those things and get, and get money back for that as well. But it's just better, we're going to be seeing less go into landfills as opposed to more.
Right.
Okay, what are the board's wishes on adopting the designation plan? Brian, you have something?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just one additional thing that I think is kind of important, and, and maybe Kirk can comment on it, but that is the liability also with this plan helps and maybe Kirk can comment on it, but that is the liability also with this plan helps guarantee that garbage isn't going out of county that we are liable for. And, and if we send, if garbage is picked up by a private hauler in this county and goes to Gwinner or Fargo and it's contaminated, they can come back at us as a county, correct?
Right.
For the liability if it's a contaminated product. So that's another reason for this low control, even though there's been lots of positive things, but I think the liability factor is, maybe Kirk could just.
Yeah, one of the things, and, and there has been experience, some of the metro counties have had some experience in that regard, where some of their waste ended up in a privately-owned landfill, and there's a concept called joint inseparable liability, and under that concept, the deep pocket gets to participate regardless of how much material they actually take to the facility. So, again, as Brian mentioned, I think that this is, that's, that's another consideration as well.
One last thing, and I, I don't think that we in any way, shape, or form should, a hundred percent know this is gonna happen. It's something that, all indications are, from our standpoint, we feel it's the right thing to happen. This comes from our Solid Waste Advisory Committee, as well as the, the perm group. But until this goes through its process, and we go through the public hearing process, and then you might hear the other side, you know, I, I just, I think we all have to keep our, our minds open and understand that, you know, we might be hearing some things from, from solid waste people that are gonna try to convince us otherwise, so.
I can almost guarantee you'll hear, you'll hear from people, you know. And I, you know, again, from my perspective, again, I think Kevin raised a good point. This is a process, and it's important to remember, it is a process, and, you know, at any point, if we decide that this is something that is not in the best interest of the county, then we can, we can stop at that point in time.
Yeah, I, I, I just don't want it to make it sound today that we're rubber-stamping this thing.
Exactly.
All indications are, it's a good deal, but until we go through the whole process and, and do hear from those who may have concerns, that's what we'll know, so.
I'll make a motion to support the designation plan.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side, motion carries.
All right, thank you. You get a little more of me, though.
Yeah.
I wanna give you a little Reader's Digest version here of what the Solid Waste Department is all about, and what we're doing, and what we're gonna be doing, and what we hope to be doing, and things like that. Essentially, I just wanted to start out by helping you all understand and remember that we're funded by what we call an enterprise fund, and enterprise fund is separate from the county fund. It's basically self-generated. The sources of the funding are basically a service fee that all homes and businesses in, in Clay County pay on an annual basis. Landfill tipping fee, we get some state from SCORE, which is state funding, and then we have some funding also from licenses for trucks from the waste haulers. Essentially, the assets that we have, we have, you know, tons and tons of equipment, we have the landfill, as I said, I feel that's an asset, there's a lot of people that feel it's a liability, but I think it's an asset. We have some property north of Highway Ten, which is commonly known as the Riverton property, it's about four hundred acres there. And then, the most important thing is, we have what we call a financial assurance fund. The financial assurance fund is something that's required by the state of Minnesota to have our landfill, and it's about two million dollars in that fund. The fund cannot be used for anything else except for landfill cleanup, and it will stay there for a long, 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 long time, long after we're done. So those are basically assets. As far as some of the programs that we have, I just wanna talk about the recycling a little bit. Essentially, all the cities in Clay County have a recycling, some kind of recycling program. They have either a, a drop-off center, which most of them have a drop-off center, but some have some containers, and essentially, those drop-off centers are funded, and the programs themselves are funded by the county, and that money is generally from the SCORE funding mechanism from the state. Landfill does do a lot of recycling, those guys out there, you need to hand it to them. If there's loads that are probably more likely or better to be used at the, the demo landfill, which is privately owned, they'll send it down. If there's material within the, the waste that they think is useful, they'll pull it out and they'll put it in the materials exchange area, or if they think there's a material that should be recycled, they'll, they'll pull it out and they'll recycle it, so. Landfill does do some recycling. Currently, you know, we had a great year last year as far as electronics, we recycle more electronics than we have in the past, and, you know, Kevin and I kinda tease each other about that, it's better that we recycle it than have it in the ditches. I, I think that it's a really, a really positive thing.
He doesn't like the fact that it's free, and I say it.
I didn't say that, but.
Well, you can get your product out.
There are some people that, that do feel strongly about that we should have people pay for it, but we do pay for it.
But, yeah, but.
But it's free, it doesn't end up in my ditch.
That's exactly right.
Exactly. And quite honestly, I mean, this is the thing that's really ironic to me, is even though it's free, I mean, we still get farmers coming in with twenty and thirty computers at a time, that, you know, people are, you know, being pigs and take it out and throw it in the ditches, they're too lazy to come in and, and take it to the recycling center. So, anyway, we recycle electronics, we also recycle fluorescent bulbs, and we also have a program in the, the spring generally for recycling fluorescent business bulbs, but that's at a cost, the businesses have to pay for that. We also recycle egg pesticide containers out at the landfill. This last year, we went for a whole week where we were actually collecting materials, our volume was up a little bit. I think it's a really good program. We also try to take some larger containers, which we haven't in the past. We didn't get as many as I expected, I think part of that was that we didn't let the other farmers know that that service was available. The other thing that we do is, there are some egg chemicals that we recycle, that's in conjunction with the Department of Egg, the state, that's done every other year. We did it this year, it was up in Georgetown, Ginnor was not as well, people did not participate quite as much as I would've liked, but I have a pretty high bar, so I was a little disappointed. The landfill, as I mentioned, has a fifty-year capacity. The number, I don't know what that means, honestly. I mean, I, I came up here and I was working with Clay County thirty years ago, and at that point in time, you only had ten years left. You have done an awful lot of work out there, you relocated wholesale, so there is fifty years of capacity, that's the estimate right now. I think with some of the things that we've done, and some of the things we intend to do, I think we'll, we'll easily make that fifty years and perhaps go even further than that. You've heard about this, Jenny, you haven't heard about this too much, but you will, we have an active gas system out there. What that means is methane, which is a gas that's created when the gases, or when the waste is decomposing, mostly from organics. It's a greenhouse gas, it's a nasty gas, and the PCA wants us to control it, so we have an active gas system. We have a flare out there, that's, we're getting better at getting the operation of it. That was a concern of mine when I first came here, is it seemed like the flare was out more than was on. I think that Wink has worked really, really hard with us to try and get the, the system up and going, so it's.
And why was it going on?
I think part of the problem was, and this'll, I'll, I'll try and not be too smart, but essentially, I think our guys, they did, Wink did a really good job as far as engineering, but I don't think that they, they really gave the instructions that my operators needed to have in order to have my guys really know how to operate it. So, I mean, essentially, what they were doing is they were trying to fly in a, fly in a plane when they only had a driver's license rather than a pilot's license, so. I think that they're, they're doing much better now, I mean, I've been pretty pleased. We've had some issues here in the last couple of weeks, but I think it was more due to the cold weather than anything else, but that's something that you'll continue to hear about here as we move forward. The other thing that we have out there is, we have a leachate recirculation, which means essentially, we take the leachate, and what leachate is, the best explanation I've ever heard is, it's, it's like coffee, except you, the garbage or the grounds, and, I'm sorry, coffee, it's the, the garbage is the grounds, and then the, the leachate is essentially the coffee. That's, there's some nasty, nasty stuff in there, so we have to treat that, and we take that over to Fargo and then treat that. What we're trying to do with the leachate recirculation, which is basically spraying the, the leachate back onto the working face of the, the landfill, is what that does, is that increases the gas production, and it also helps us save some money as far as leachate treatment. We, we've had some issues with that here in the last year. Essentially, we oversaturated the, the working face. Again, I think it was a situation where my guys, you know, had a driver's license and not a pilot's license, I think we're going to, we're, we're in the process of getting that thing rectified. Major accomplishments for 2014, I don't wanna talk about that too much, 'cause you don't get any place looking in the rearview mirror except in a ditch. So, but some of the things I'm pretty proud of that we accomplished last year is Prairie Lakes, as I talked about briefly, ninety-four hundred tons on an annual basis, and that's huge. There are, there is some cost involved, eighty-four bucks a ton, for anything over six thousand tons, so it's basically thirty-four hundred tons, we have to pay, or three thousand tons, I'm sorry, we pay eighty-four dollars a tons, and transportation costs, so that does get a little spendy, but I think it's worthwhile. The other thing that we did last year that I was really pleased about is, we did, outside of Moorhead, collection for electronics and household hazardous waste. We had a collection in Holly, and we had a collection in Barnesville. Huge success, huge success. People really appreciated it, and I think it was, it was something we're, we're gonna do again, I think, this year. We began feasibility study for a transfer station, problem material relocation, and a new material recovery facility, I'll talk a little bit about that later. The other thing we've done is, we've opened the household hazardous waste facility up year-round, so the facility down on Highway Ten is open through the winter, it used to only be opened through the non-winter months. I don't know how that's gonna work, but we're gonna give it a shot. We had a Green Corps member, which I thought was pretty positive, I mean, she's worked out really well, she's done the Take Jack Back, which is the pumpkins, and she's gotten some information on fees, which I'll share with you fairly soon. And, you know, probably the biggest thing that I'm pretty pleased with is communication of the city seems to improve. You know, I've gone out and worked with her, I've talked to Holly Township two or three times, I've had staff go out and meet with, you know, some of the rural counties consistently. I talk to the city of Moorhead probably three or four times a week, so, and then, as I mentioned, I also have talked to the city of Fargo. Wish list for 2015, I'm just gonna give you a short list, 'cause they're all big. The, we hope to complete the feasibility study for the transfer station and the problem materials, and I don't know, Kevin, if you wanna talk about that, or you wanna wait to talk about that, or you wanna talk about the Giana, it doesn't matter.
The transfer station.
Yeah, you wanna talk about the feasibility study that we're doing?
Well, you can give me, go ahead and give an update on that.
Essentially, we're, we're gonna be finishing the feasibility study for this transfer station, relocate the transfer station and the, the household hazardous waste, and the problem materials basically, and material recovery facility, which is a single sort for recyclables. And we're talking about having it located up on, by the compost facility up on Highway Seventy-Five. It's, it's a pretty big deal, if we can get this done, that would be a really, really positive thing, and I think that would be something that would be very well-accepted. One of the problems that we have here in the city of Moorhead is, is that we have a lot of apartments, and in order to really have the opportunity for those folks to recycle, I think that the single sort is about the only way we're gonna get that done. So I think that's pretty important. The second thing that we're in the middle of is completing the landfill permitting process, you know, in order to have a, operate the landfill, we have to have a landfill permit. The, the permit is for ten years, and as I said, we're in the middle of it right now. One of the things that I already know that has happened that I'm a little surprised about, is the PCA wants us to put in a new well nest, and that's gonna cost a considerable amount of money that wasn't in my budget originally, so I'll be coming back and talking to you about that as well. I'm not sure why they want a new well nest, they, we haven't, we don't have any problems out there, none of the wells are showing any problems, but they feel that in order to provide the security and safety that they need to have, they want another well nest, so we'll go through the process. Optimize, as I mentioned, I wanna optimize the methane recovery and the leachate recirculation. One of the things that I'm gonna do this year is, the leachate treatment option is very expensive, both the transportation and the treatment itself, so I'm gonna be looking at different alternatives of, of what we can do to try and treat this leachate differently, to try and save some money. This next one is pretty, pretty large, we have a new scale out at the landfill, and we're moving from a volume-based to a weight-based way of charging for the, the waste disposal. So, we're gonna be developing some data and some information to see what the loads look like, to, to get a better sense for that, and then we'll be talking to you all about fees for a weight-based.
Yeah, those rates have to be set here.
Right, they'll be set here, exactly, they'll be, the fees and the service fee, we'll, we'll come back and we'll talk about that as well. I'd like to try and update the industrial waste plan, although that's kinda far down on the, the, the dance card. One of the things that has happened is, is that the, the industrial waste plan's not been, you know, renewed since nineteen ninety-seven, it's time to take another look at it and actually do something positive about it. There's a thing called paint care, it's a state program, we have to get that resolved, because that's gonna have a major impact on our household hazardous waste facility. Essentially, paint care is, is that the paint manufacturers will be responsible for the paint, the disposal, and so it'll help us as far as some of the financing efforts that we, we need to do. That thing's been going on for about six months to a year, and they aren't any closer to getting it done now than they were six months or a year ago, so I don't know if we're gonna get that done or not. Want to become more active in waste education, one of the things that I, I think that we've kinda fell short on this last year, and part of that, I think most of it was my fault, but we, Shannon basically was hired originally to do a waste education, but whenever there was a, a need to be filled, she filled it, and that was at the expense of waste education, so we're, we've, we've got our staffing a little bit better, and I'm feeling a little bit better about that, so I'm, I'm gonna have her really, really get involved with waste education. And then the final thing is, and this is very exciting, organic composting, I know Brian is, you know, when I talk about organic composting, he, he can't sleep at night, it's because he gets so excited about it, but we're getting a.
There's other reasons.
We're getting a, a private individual from the city that's coming up, and he's talking about taking organic waste, primarily food waste, from the colleges, he's talking to the city, he's talking to senior center, he's talking to North Dakota State, he's talking to the city of Fargo, he's talking about doing about a hundred tons a day of organic waste, so that would be a sizable amount. The other thing he wants from us, and that, it could be kind of an issue, but I'm thinking about Riverton area right now, he just wants a site, and so that's all we have to do, is find him about fifteen to twenty acres. So that, that's kinda where we're at, that's where I hope we can go, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer them.
Well, it's hard not to get excited when you're talking about waste, Kirk.
It's always picking up, isn't it, huh?
It really is.
I've never seen the guy who likes to talk trash like that.
Yeah, I know.
Any other, any other questions for Kirk this morning?
You guys are mean.
Thanks, Kirk.
Good work, James.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
An extra approval of the designation agreement with Partnership for Health, Kathy, come on up. Kathy McCaffrey.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, gee, that's a hard act to follow, I don't know, I'm not talking about waste. You have, I have two items, the delegation agreement, which you have in your packet, and that's an agreement between our community health board, the newly-formed four-county Partnership for Health Community Health Board, and the. Partnership for Health Community Health Board and the county, and each county will be signing this agreement, so it's a standardized agreement. And mainly, it's delegating the responsibilities that the community health board has per statute back to the county board. And so if you look in section three, you'll see a lot of those requirements that the county board must comply with, and this is, it's nothing new. We've been doing this for a long time.
Mr. Chair. Kathy, is this done on a yearly basis?
This, I believe, will just be in place unless there's changes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, I move approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All saying aye, motion carries.
Okay. The second one is-
I think, Mr. Chair, I think you should tell Commissioner Campbell that he just approved an extra hundred thousand dollar pay for her while he was out of the room.
Well, yeah, and then this next one is ten thousand to go directly to me, so-
Crazy things always happen.
That's cash.
This is, yeah, health partners wanted to give me a bonus because they feel like this board doesn't recognize my accomplishments, so, no, I'm kidding. I'm sorry. Health partners is giving a donation of ten thousand and they've done it throughout the state to those counties that provide an evidence-based home visiting program. We have two evidence-based home visiting programs, the two that are recognized from, by the Minnesota Department of Health. So because of that, they are just providing us ten thousand dollars. They must have had extra money that they did not use and now need to use to a, with a good cause, so they're providing that to many counties, serving high-risk families. So we'll certainly, this will be part of the programmatic things that we do with our family home visiting program, of which county dollars are utilized as well. So it was a nice surprise that we received some money to work with those families. So any approval, Kirk?
We would move to accept the donation.
We have a motion to accept the donation. Motion and second by Frank. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All saying aye, motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy.
You mean lady?
Okay, committee reports. Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thursday, January fifteenth, Lake Agassiz Regional Library Finance Committee meeting and full board meeting. General business, we approve the financial institution for Lake Agassiz Regional Library, Bell State Bank and Morgan Stanley. The directors report, there will be a book sale on January twenty-ninth through January thirty-first at the library. A list of seven donations, a couple of which were quite substantial, but I don't feel I should be giving names at this meeting. We went over the upcoming legacy programs, discussed the 2015 legacy platform is presented by the Minnesota Library Association. Under the president's report, we voted on change to the bylaws, so they were in order with the lowering of the size of the full board. And then we had member and signatory reports, and that's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Frank?
Tuesday after our meeting, we went highway tracking. Main discussion was building relocation into the Holly area, so we're trying to find a new place for that. We're working on some land, buying some land out there. Had a meeting in the Metropolitan Council of Governments, there we pretty much went through the quarter reports and the annual report, and then, other than that, on Monday, yesterday, we had an executive committee meeting of the Metropolitan Council of Government where we went over some new agreements that we had to sign off on. We had purchased some new equipment and we're also working on the hiring of a senior transportation planner. That's pretty much what we did there.
Okay, Jenny?
Last Thursday, I also attended the MetroCog meeting with Frank as well. I covered that well, general business and annual reports. And then yesterday, I met with the Casc clay Food Systems Advisory Board that is just forming, and so they are getting together with all the commissioners just to kind of get a baseline and see what goals we'd like to accomplish and kind of where we all stand, so I appreciate meeting with them. And I do have a pamphlet on the food charter if you'd like to view it. It's yours.
Thank you. Kevin?
Okay, last Tuesday, as Frank said, we had a highway tracking committee meeting and we did talk about, more about the potential shifting and moving of a shop in Holly and you, RoLog, combining those two as a possibility. We also discussed some potential equipment upgrades that Dave is looking at, and we talked a little bit about, there's been a request from Wilken County to share in some of our engineering expertise here while they go without an engineer. And that's, we've kind of sent that back for more information from them. We want to know how the compensation would work and what that would take away or what additional hours that would require of either Dave or-
Nathan.
Nathan, yeah, thank you. And then also, we're setting up the township schedule for the 2015 rates, per mile rates for all the township. We want to have that in place that we can have a meeting with them and get, get that information to them in time while in advance of their annual meetings, which I think this year is on March tenth, I think, is the township meeting, whatever that, first Tuesday after the second Monday is, I think that's how the ordinance reads, but it's somewhere around the tenth of March, I think. And then on Wednesday morning, Grant and I went over and spoke to the Moorhead Business Association. The primary topic that they asked us to come and talk about was, was the jail issue. And so we, we talked about where, where we are now, where it's been, where we are now, the number of inmates we're having to ship out on a daily basis. And we talked, and there were some questions about funding and potential funding mechanisms, and they, they were all, I don't know, Grant, you might want to speak to it too, but it seems to me that they were all very, very open to it, and I think, I think it was pretty widespread understanding that Clay County needs a new jail. I think this group really recognized that and I, I think we're going to get support from them. I think the, the primary issue is going to be how, what mechanisms we, we use to fund it. And, and we told them that we've got this committee together and over the next six months, we're going to be reviewing it and we'll, we'll go back to them. And of course, we need to not only talk to that group, but we need to talk to the various cities, city of Moorhead and all of our other outlying cities to make sure that they're aware of why this need is there and what we want to do. Then on Thursday morning, we had a solid waste advisory committee meeting, and I don't need to go through that because most of those things are things Kirk just talked to us about today, including the designation plan, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Let's see, I also, like Kevin mentioned, was that the more-
Oh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I forgot one more. Personal issue committee meeting this morning. This morning, we met and we talked, we got an update on some union negotiations that are still ongoing, but I think everything so far is moving, moving in a positive direction from what we were told. And then we got an update on a, on a case that has been ongoing with a former employee for quite some time. And then, if you recall, when, when we approved the smoking ban for the campus, there was a couple of stipulations that we agreed to that would be in there. One would allow people to go into their cars. And then the other one was that the employees on their fifteen-minute breaks now should be able to leave the campus. That, that was, that was the other one. And I think, I think you're going to be ready to bring that portion of that next week to come forward. It's just a matter of just eliminating a couple of lines, so.
Okay, thanks.
That's it.
I was also at the Moorhead Business Association meeting, and it was a very positive meeting. We've got a member of the association on our committee looking at what we're going to do to build a jail, and I think they were happy about that and very positive, it was well-attended, a lot of, lot of, lot of business owners there, so. I had Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Corporation Executive Committee meeting, and we pretty much went over what Mr. Gart went over with us this morning. Had a Northwest Regional Radio Board meeting and general business there, but one of the things we're looking at doing, we've had the Headwaters Regional Development Corporation has pretty much managed the financial issues with their regional radio board for the past several years, but we're looking at changing that and having a county, one of the counties in our group take over that responsibility. It'll probably be more cost-effective, and the way things have changed now, where we're at, it'll probably make more sense to have a county doing it rather than an outside agency. Had a solid waste meeting, that's already been discussed. The PIC meeting, I had that, that's been discussed, and I had an area agency on aging, area agency on aging meeting yesterday in Fergus Falls, and there we're kind of looking at a transition plan possibly by the end of this year where we would disband the West Central Area Agency on Aging and become, which we already are a part of, but we only have one organization, the Northwest Regional Development Commission operates the Land of the Dancing Sky area on aging, so. Let's see, I think that was it for me. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Highway tracking, that's been well-covered, hit all of the four topics that I jotted down here. Had some personnel evaluations, got a couple more this month yet, so take some time. Julie, Justin and I from the, from the jail spent a little time on the past designs that were looked at and they, we're studying those, so they're going to do some presentation at our next meeting, which is coming up pretty quick. It's the first Monday of February, so just in a couple of weeks. So there's some interesting things there. We spent quite a bit of time on reviewing that. I did take in the state of the city address in which Dilworth and Moorhead and Fargo and West Fargo speak on the future of the, of the metropolitan area here. I thought it was, it was very interesting. That was last Thursday morning. Then we had a central administration meeting after that in the morning. Then we also met in the afternoon, referenced the surveyors, you know, we do not now have a county surveyor, and I think Dave Overbow and Mark and Diane have been meeting in regards to, been meeting our needs. We had talked originally about setting up some training, that's going forward. We, we want to stress to the people that are the engineering firms and surveying people in this county that they are required by law, by statute to record their surveyors and so the, one of the first steps that's going to happen on that is that we're going to have an educational piece so that they understand what they're supposed to do. And then we'll have to proceed that there's going to be some consequences if they, if they don't start recording those, plus a plan for doing some corners. Going to put out an RFP for an engineer, for a surveyor to do some of the cornering, and I think we're going to make some real good progress in regards to that, so we'll keep the abreast of that as we move forward. And head PIC committee, that was covered well this morning, so that goes my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Frank, you have something?
I got one more. I'd like to pursue, I don't know how to go about it, but as far as the county, when you're talking about surveyors and stuff like that, I mean, as far as building inspector, building codes or something, I've had some citizens come to me the last couple of weeks concerning some building inspections, and it's just, they're very concerned about what's going on in their area. And as I'm going to Tim and talking to him, it looks to me like there's nothing we can do about it, and it's just, should we have? I mean, I'd like to know what the pros and cons are for a building inspector. I don't know what, you know, should we get involved in it, shouldn't we get involved in it? Should we have a building inspector? I mean, some of the cities have their own, but as a county, we don't do anything. And we have these little developments that are coming up in the area and should we be doing something or should we just let people build? They have to get a site, they have to get a site plan, I realize they have to come to us for a site plan, but do you know more?
Yeah, well Frank, I can, I can, this issue was brought up, I'm guessing maybe five or six years ago regarding having our own building codes policies and our own inspector, so to speak, and everything that goes on out there, and, and I, but what all said and done is that I believe we just decided to go with the state building code. And, you know, so anybody who builds out there, they, you know, they need to be hiring licensed people that have to follow the state building codes. So if they don't-
Well, okay.
You know.
I understand. I guess that's what I'm trying to find out, you know.
Yeah, but we can certainly, we can-
I mean, I'm just looking at, nothing has been checked on there, you know, I mean, I know we did, last summer, we did some septic tank ordinance, you know, and stuff like that, and I don't know.
And we could, we could ask Tim to come in and give us a, a, or a report on what did go on back when we last looked at that.
Yeah, I guess I just-
Back when I know Commissioner Waller was still on the board at that time and, and him being in the building industry and with his teaching and stuff, and he was one of the ones who felt kind of strongly too that we'd stay with the state building code, so.
Well, I guess, that's, that's what I want to hear is, you know, what's, what are the pros and cons for it? Should we get involved in it? Should we get?
And I think there's, there's minutes and records of what's transpired there, and we could certainly ask to get an update on, on that information.
Because, I mean, like I say, I've got some residents that are concerned about what is going on as far as in a building, you know. So is there anything we can do about it? Evidently, what I'm finding out, we can't, you know, he can do, as long as he's working on inside the house, he can do what he wants, and it's just, we've got no control. Just, very good.
Mr. Chairman, I got, I was just looking at this committee assignments, and there's one thing that isn't actually listed on, on here and it probably should be for, it shows me on the FM diversion authority, but I'm also on the FM, the public outreach committee for the diversion authority, and that isn't actually listed on here, and I think it should be, and then I also think that you-
You want that listed separate?
Yeah, and then I also believe that because you're the alternate for the diversion authority board, you should also be the alternate for the public outreach, because I think you did go for me-
I did.
-last month. But I think they should, I think that should stand, just like Jenny's on the FM land, diversion land management, it's a separate committee that falls under this massive, it's a major, major project, so I think they should be-
Okay. Do we need a motion to change, add those?
Yeah.
I move to approve the additions to the committee assignments.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All saying, motion carries. Okay, we'll make those changes. Anything else? Brian?
Mr. Chair, a follow-up to Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Campbell's discussion on the, on the building code. I know I've talked with Tim a little bit about that too, and I'm sensing that the commission may want that looked at, so it might be helpful if it's a desire of the, of the full board to have the planning commission take a look at a building code, because that's where the public hearings would take place if they were going to pursue that issue again, so maybe that would be okay?
I, Mr. Chairman and Brian, I, I think what we ought to do is we ought to, we ought to just bring Tim in here and get a history of-
Sure.
-of what transpired first.
Okay.
Because I do believe that that might have been one of the areas where the planning commission and the county board maybe disagreed a little bit-
Oh.
-on things, so.
Okay.
So I just, I think it would be appropriate to, I mean, we, I think there's four of you that probably were not, not on at that time for the discussion, and I'm sure that we could get Tim in here- we could get Tim in here to-
Bring us up today.
-give us a recap of what had transpired and how we came about the decisions that we did.
Okay, we'll schedule him to do that, so. Anything else?